Good evening. We call to order the June 2023 Bryan County Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustment meeting. First item on the agenda will be the approval of the May minutes. Has everyone, excuse me, the May 16th special call meeting, has everyone had a chance to look over the special call meeting minutes?
Yes.
Okay, any questions, concerns, comments? No? If we can please have a motion for the approval of the May special call meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those minutes so pass. Next item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes for the regular May 16th 2023 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes so pass. Next item on the agenda will be the Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion to open this public hearing for Board of Adjustment?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in public hearing. Brett?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This first item is a variance that Deborah Brant is representing David Mitchell requesting to reduce all side setbacks on an existing, in order to replace an existing home at 465 Holly Hill Road. And you can see the current zoning here is RR1. The current lot is only, it's less than a quarter acre in size, and so the setbacks for the RR1 zoning district are 50 feet from the front and rear. So if there were to be a strict application of the UDO, you could replace anything buildable on the lot. The home was recently damaged in the storm that Richmond Hill had. Here's some pictures. These are the setbacks he's requesting, 40 feet from the front and rear, 25 feet from the left side, and 22 feet from the right side, just to replace the home that was on there before. And staff does recommend approval of the variance because we feel variance criteria are met. Do you have any questions?
What are the current setbacks with the damaged home? Is it the same as what he's asking for?
Well, so, yes. So, yeah. So we took the Q public imagery and measured it out. So this is, you know, where it was before.
Questions for Brett? Thank you. Do we have the applicant here, Deborah Brant or David Mitchell? Would you, would any of you like to speak? You don't have to, but if you would like to. No? Okay. I did drive by and saw what went on down there. So glad you guys are okay. Do we have anyone? Don, we have no speaker slips tonight? Okay, if no one got a chance to fill out a speaker slip, you can do so now for any of the items, but if you would like to speak for or against this project, I'll give you a moment. No? Okay. With that, do we have a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now in regular meeting. Do we have a motion, please, to, for this variance for the project 20230355?
Make a motion to approve the variance as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that variance passes. And just for the Mitchells and the Brants, as we sit as a body for the Board of Adjustment, it does not go any farther to the commission. That variance passed, so you have your setbacks. Okay. Thank you. All right. May we have a motion, please, to open public hearing for Planning and Zoning Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now in planning and zoning public hearing.
Can't open that particular item.
Oh, I apologize. Do I need to open this item for the comprehensive plan?
Yes, and we will go ahead and present that along with item number two for the rezoning.
So may I please have a motion, please, thank you Alex, for both item one and two, the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning project.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so for these first two items, Scott Allison with Coleman and Company is representing the applicant Silverman Land Holdings LLC. The request here is to amend both the comprehensive plan, character area, and future land use map by changing the classification from property from low density and agricultural to industrial. And the second part of the request is to rezone the property from the A5 agricultural district to the I2 general industrial district. So the property in question here is located on Warnell Farm Road in the north end of the county. This is just west of Eldora Road and borders the Bullock County line to the north. The project area consists of a total of 298.37 acres and is currently undeveloped. So the current comprehensive plan character area and future land use map for North Bryan County does show this site as being located within the low density and agricultural character area. This character area is currently defined as being suitable for low density residential uses as well as agricultural uses. So currently with the applicant's request to rezone to the I2, we find that the current comprehensive plan is not consistent or nor does it support the requested rezoning. Now, since the last comprehensive plan was completed in 2018, we have seen a number of comprehensive plan amendments in this area of the north end of the county, such that we're starting to see that the overall general character is predominantly transitioning to industrial between that I-16 and Eldora Road area. This has also been a subject of conversation now that we have moved into the five-year update of our current comprehensive plan. So we are required to update this every five years. We started this process back in 2022. We are currently in phase two of that project and wrapping up our public input. And we are at the point now where we have released a draft of an updated character area map. And so that's what you're seeing on your screen right now. With this draft, this is something that has gone through both our technical advisory committee as well as our steering committee. And it's something that we have put out to the public and just closed the survey where we received some additional public input on it. Now, the plan for this moving forward is going to be to present this along with the full comprehensive plan draft at public hearings beginning in July. So we are just ahead of getting this into the public hearing cycle for final review and adoption. But I wanted to highlight it this evening because I did want to point out the general location of where this property is located, to demonstrate that through that public input and the review with our technical committees, we are currently showing this proposed as industrial. Now, the zoning of the property, again, is still zoned A5 agricultural, but you can see it in proximity to the industrial development region, where we see the zoning of the property to the south and the west is already zoned I2. To the east, we have property that is zoned RR1.5 and RR2.5. These parcels are either undeveloped or currently developed with low density residential uses. And to the north, not represented on this map, are lands that are located in Bullock County, but they are zoned AG5, which is the county's equivalent of A5. This shows the concept plan that has been presented by the applicant for both the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. You'll see from the submitted concept plan that they are proposing six buildings totaling approximately 1.6 million square feet of warehouse space. It does show internal driveways with both truck and employee parking areas, green space, and stormwater management areas. Ingress and egress will be provided via the addition of three new access points on Warnell Farm Road. Now, as we're looking at this concept plan in relation to the adjacent zoning, our primary concern in establishing compatibility with those residential uses to the north and the east are going to look at, you know, buffering and what type of adequate spacing is being provided through the concept plan. So for those properties that are to the north of Warnell Farm Road into the east, we know that there's going to be a lot of wetlands that are on the site that are being shown as being preserved and unimpacted. So they're going to provide some additional buffering to those properties to the north. And then whenever we're looking north of Warnell Farm Road into the east, we know that there are large tracts of undeveloped land that have existing vegetation there. So the primary concern in looking at those buffering requirements or impact to adjacent parcels is really going to be on the south of Warnell Farm Road and along the east boundary of that development. Now, I will say that with amendment that was passed in December of 2022, buffer standards between residential uses and industrial districts changed. The reason for the change was to provide some flexibility in how they can create good buffers between those adjacent uses. And the ordinance now gives three options. Developers can give a wider buffer, which we call a type A buffer, and that would be at 75 feet. They can do a type B buffer, which would be at 50 feet wide. Or the narrowest one is our type C, which is a 40-foot wide buffer. Now, based off of this concept plan that has been provided, the developer is showing a 40-foot buffer. So I do just want to highlight this for everybody to show that the planting requirements for that type C 40-foot wide buffer are going to have to be adhered to. And I did go ahead and pull out just an exhibit from our new ordinance as it was amended to kind of show the intent of that 40-foot wide buffer, where we see a more dense replanting to include a berm in order to achieve the screening that would otherwise be achieved with a wider buffer at 50 or 75 feet. So both for the developer and for, you know, any member of the public to just kind of understand what that requirement would look like. So with that and with this, these requests, we have two motions that would have to be made this evening. The first one for the comprehensive plan amendment. And I did just want to go through kind of the options for any motion that could be made. So for the comprehensive plan amendments, this board can either recommend approval, in which case, if recommended for approval, the item would move forward to the July Board of Commissioners meeting. You could recommend denial if you feel that this item is not appropriate based off of the current comprehensive plan and where we are in that process. And with that recommendation, again, it would move forward to the Board of Commissioners, their meeting in July. Or the third option that this board has is to defer the item. And typically, whenever we defer our item, it is to receive additional public input, which could be achieved through additional public hearings or through the public hearing with the comprehensive plan update that we know will be kicking off next month. Now, with these options, especially for deferrals, I do always like for the applicants to weigh in on how that impacts their timeframe. And so with this one, I did have the chance to talk to the applicant, and I do think that they would prefer, regardless if it was a leaning for a recommended approval or a recommendation for denial, I think that they would prefer either way to get some type of recommendation from this board to move it forward. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and we'll have the representative further address that whenever they're up here making their comments. Now, the second motion that we would need this evening is a motion on the requested rezoning. If recommended for approval to move forward to the Board of Commissioners in July, then with the comprehensive plan amendments, that would also show your support for a recommendation for approval on the rezoning. And do just want to point out that if recommended for approval, then we would ask that two conditions be included in that motion. The first one being their obligations to enter into a water and sewer agreement with the county, which would have to be entered into prior to the issuance of any development permits, and their obligation to enter into a transportation agreement with the county, also required to be entered into prior to the issuance of any development permits. Now, if you choose to recommend denial on the comprehensive plan, then we would be recommending that you recommend denial on the rezoning as well. So with that, I'm available for any questions, but I do know that the representative Scott Allison is also here this evening to address you.
With the buffer requirements, the A, B, and C, are there any height requirements for burners?
I'm sorry, height requirements for burners? Yes. So the only, of those three options, the only one that is required to have a berm is the type C buffer at 40 feet wide, which they are showing at this point. And that height requirement on the berming is four feet.
Four.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Amanda? Thank you. Mr. Allison? Good evening.
Good to see everybody. Just to go through the comprehensive plan amendment first. So in review of the 2018 plan that was adopted, there was mention of the Interstate Center Industrial Park and the new opportunities it could provide for North Bryan County. Obviously, there have been subsequent events since the adoption that were not fully anticipated related to new manufacturing in the area. I know you guys have seen a lot of comprehensive plan. I know you guys have seen a lot of comprehensive plan amendments come through and rezonings in this area outside of the industrial development region. It's causing imminent need for additional supporting warehouses type developments and necessity to expand future land use and character area to industrial for these properties. Amanda did a great job kind of explaining our project, and I had not seen that draft and anticipated that, you know, as a future land use plan, that they're likely just based on the industrial development region and expanding kind of into these areas. Our application came in in September. We had to get through transportation impact assessment before we could come before you guys. Two properties at once on the TIA, the transportation impact assessment. So it was a little bit complicated, but we felt that it was best to look at this item and your subsequent item that you're looking at as one as opposed to looking at it in a silo and saying, you know, this one doesn't impact this one, they go together. It isn't that they'll be developed together, but really to show the impact of what our traffic does to the roadways on Warnell Farm, the intersections at Eldora, the intersection at 80. We wanted to do them together. It just caused a little bit of a delay in review of that. That's why we're before you now and not previously. We feel that it's in keeping with the recent comprehensive plan amendments for the neighboring parcels and those within the North Bryan industrial development region. Also, as it relates to the rezoning, as far as your criteria for decision-making on rezonings, we feel that this helps carry out the purpose of the UDO by encouraging the most appropriate use of land, supporting the fiscal health of the county, and promoting private investment and sustainable non-residential development. The proposed reclassification is compatible with the overall character and land use pattern that's kind of occurred in the properties adjacent to us on this track one. You know, Amanda did mention that our desire would be to have a recommendation, and the reason for that is the commissioners do desire that this meeting for when it has public hearing in front of them and they ultimately voted up and down, that that does occur on the north end. So if we were to defer, that would push us into September. As I mentioned, we applied last September. So the Stubbs family have been kind of on a hold, if you will, in our client's purchase of that property. But, you know, I just feel that as the owners of the property trying to sell that, you know, deferring and having them wait another couple of months to have a decision on whether or not our client can purchase from them, you know, is something that we desire to just go ahead and get passed and get a decision on, not trying to, you know, discount y'all in any way. And they know me better than that. That's just trying to give you just the facts of kind of where we're at on it. They've been waiting a long time for a decision on this, and some of it's just the nature of the process. As we all know, it's not easy. As far as the concept plan, it is that. It is a yield analysis concept on it. You know, we're not before you for a master plan approval. We know that we've got to get in this some more specific development. We've based that on the information that we have. You know, as far as the buffering is concerned, we did try to accommodate on that southern portion. As far as the design goes, you know, we don't have, you know, the back end of a truck court right up against there. It's the side of the building. There is some parking off on that end, but we do have the flexibility to adjust when it comes time to site planning if we can accommodate, you know. It is a four-foot berm and that tight buffer. It's planted, but we do have the ability to be flexible in that regard when we get into the site planning process to increase that buffer if we just can't pull off. Look, I mean, it's industrial. I'm not going to stand up here and say that you are able to buffer them greatly. It's about that kind of, you know, that sound attenuation in this, the, you know, the visual buffering. But sometimes warehouses, and it's like holding a pencil in front of the ocean when you try to buffer them if the existing vegetation isn't there. So I don't want to smoke a mirror at you guys and make you think that you're not going to see it. But we did try to accommodate for, we don't have a million square foot, what we refer to as bombers, laying next to that piece of property. I can answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Scott?
Was there any, is there any planned usage for the warehouses aside from just if you build it, they will come?
You know, there, right now, it would be spec warehouse, what they're considering. We have another piece of property, if you remember, for this client that came through on the Conley Davis piece, there's a lot of interested developers of warehouse and logistics space. It's not a, we haven't seen any interest in follow-up manufacturing. What we've shown on the plan is warehouse suppliers and things like that for Hyundai. So, you know, right now, any and all things related to this property, our anticipation would be the same type of industrial developers that would purchase it from our clients and come in and do an industrial park in there with warehouse development.
Generally, one of my only concerns is the ghost town theory where they see manufacturing facilities come in, they build a plethora of the same thing, cookie cutter, and then it's going to be leaf. I mean, the well will not dry up naturally because of the industrial area that's going to be, but the expansion of which we're looking at infrastructurally, I mean, we don't know the exact demand, how it plays into right now, whether or not that's going to sit vacant, and you're going to have people complaining that their wonderful agricultural area now is a ghost town warehouse.
Sure.
See what I'm saying? There's too many variables to play into that now, especially with the developing comprehensive plan currently in effect. And that's one of the smaller areas of the northeastern part of the county itself. That's one of the last A areas there. You know, it's going to all eventually be swallowed up by I2. That's just the way the nature of the beast goes.
Sure.
My problem is the expansion and how fast it's going.
The expansion of industrial?
Yes, the I2 area around that, whether or not, you know. I mean, it's going to be encroaching into more areas that are low-density right now, driving people out.
I understand. You know, on that draft of the future land use map, and I'm assuming there was feedback from technical coordinating groups and things like that, I mean, this particular property is indicated to be an industrial expansion. So I think it's been contemplated. I understand what you're saying is it could potentially become a ghost town if the market dries up. Right now, I can only speak for the other property that's further along in the process, been rezoned. Everything's kind of wrapped up from an entitlement standpoint, and there are a lot of users wanting to fill that space. You know, again, it's not, I can't say this would never be. I don't want to say that, but we haven't seen, you know, a desire for secondary manufacturing, things like that on these particular pieces.
Have you guys considered the, what is being built in Chatham County, Effingham County, the warehousing?
Have we considered that?
Yes. And it looked like, riding around, looked like there's a lot being built in Effingham and some in Chatham, too, you know.
Sure. A lot of the work in Chatham is, you know, there's some properties that are in a little bit closer to the port. There is some work being done in Bloomingdale that I'm aware of. You know, the nature of this North Bryan industrial development region, you know, it was established, and now what you're seeing is it expanding a little bit into the properties that are just adjacent to where it was recently, or where it was initially established. And, you know, I don't do market analysis. I do land use and planning, but I believe it's directly driven by, you know, we've got a large manufacturer coming. So, you know, the desire is to be in close proximity to that. Couple that with, you know, the Development Authority and really just the Bryan County Commission as a whole up in this area, there's a lot of effort being made from infrastructure standpoint related to water and sewer and roads. And those commitments that are somewhat tied to Hyundai coming, okay, helps to get some state funding and things like that, but from a marketability of these properties, you see that the improvements to the roadways are going to happen. On some of the other areas that you see where people are trying to, in what I'll call more rural farmland areas in Effingham and some other counties, you don't have the support of that this really is going to be better roadways and the infrastructure and the capacity for water and sewer will be there. And that's where you run back into what Mr. Bose is saying is that it's great it gets rezoned, but it can't really take off the way it needs to because the infrastructure can't handle it. So I think that's primarily the desire for this North Bryan industrial development region is, is that the backbone infrastructure is being planned out, and therefore it can support what, you know, what can go here from an industrial standpoint. So it makes a desire point.
And just to add a little color to answer kind of these two questions, the marketability in the area, the Savannah area, the Chatham County, Effingham, Bryan, Bullock warehouse vacancy is like 0.8%. It's very, very low. So there is demand for this type of stuff, you know, specifically speaking to the, you know, the ghost town comment. Not speaking for or against, but just a few statistics that, you know, this type of stuff is in demand. It's needed, but again, it has to be done appropriately the right way.
Yeah.
And we are in a moratorium right now, but I wanted to speak that while we're in public hearing for anyone who may have read the blurb and the news or seen it on social media. We're in a moratorium until the end of the year, but this does not include, and that's for sections of Bryan County, mostly being north end of the county. But this does not include anything that was brought to planning and zoning prior to whatever last Tuesday's date was. Was that the 13th? The 13th. So there's, if anything was brought to planning and zoning, even that business day of the 13th, that still comes in and we vote on it. So just for, just for public comment on that while you're here. Okay.
Both of these tracks carry over into Bullock County, don't they?
So the track two carries over a little bit in the Bullock. This one stops at the line, but they are right at that line on its northern end.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Scott. All right. We had no speaker slots, but I always give a chance just because some people may not know to do that. Is there anyone to speak for or against this comprehensive plan amendment or this rezoning project? That would be items one and two under planning and zoning. Nope. With that, if there's no one else to speak and we have no further questions from the board, then I will ask for a motion, please, to close this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in regular meetings. So we are going to vote on these two. We're going to take two separate motions. So first, may I please have a motion for the comprehensive plan amendment for item one on the agenda, project 202, 20747.
I recommend approval. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed, Mr. Commissioner Bose. So that comprehensive plan does move on to the county commissioners next month. May we now have a motion, please, for item number two on the agenda, the rezoning of same project?
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Okay.
So I should say, conditions?
Conditions, okay.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, and again, we have one opposed from Mr. Bose. So that rezoning does pass and will move up to the county commissioners next month. May we have a motion, please, to go back into public hearing?
Make a motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we're doing three and four together.
Okay, so this two is a request submitted by Silverman Land Holdings LLC, again represented by Scott Allison with Coleman Company. And for this, what's being referred to as the stubs tract two, they are also requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan, character area, and future land use map by changing that classification from low-density and agricultural to industrial and to rezone the property from A5 to I2. Now, this particular parcel is located on the north side of Highway 80 in between Old Olive Branch Road and Olive Branch Road. The project area consists of a total of 125.54 acres and is currently undeveloped. Now, similar to the last request, the current comprehensive plan, future land use map does identify this area as being low-density and agricultural. As previously stated, that character area envisioned low-density residential uses as well as agricultural uses. But again, as we have seen, the North Bryan industrial development region develop out in this area, we are starting to see that predominant land use change from agricultural to industrial. Now, as highlighted in the previous public hearing, again, we do have that draft comprehensive plan map that is currently out for public view, and this map will show that the current parcel in question is being presented or proposed as industrial. Now, the zoning of this property currently is A5. To the south and the east of the site, we can see the existing North Bryan industrial development region and that I2 zoning. To the west, we have a parcel that is currently zoned A5, which is undeveloped. And then to the north into Bryan, or Bullock County, we have those lands that are zoned AG5, which is equivalent to Bryan County's A5. Now, the concept plan for this proposal shows five buildings totaling approximately 1.5 million square feet of warehouse space. Again, we have those internal driveways with paved truck and employee parking spaces, green space, and some stormwater management areas. Ingress and egress to this site will be via the addition of one new driveway off of Highway Now, same with the last request, we're looking for two motions on this. As stated under the prior public hearing, we're looking at those three options for the comprehensive plan amendment, either recommend approval, recommend denial, or defer. And if recommended for approval to move forward to the Board of Commissioners, we would also recommend approval on the rezoning as subject to the same conditions requiring a water and sewer agreement as well as a transportation agreement. And if you have any questions for staff, I'm available.
Questions for Amanda? No, thank you. Scott, any further comments?
The only additional comments I have, so this is the same as far as just general comments related to the comp plan as it's indicated on the draft to be industrial. But I did want to point out that directly to our east is, obviously it's zoned industrial, but there is an active construction site for warehouse on that and major plans for across the street from us. I believe there's an application into our west, but that's kind of neither here nor there because it hasn't been voted on. The one, the one good thing about this particular piece of property, and I've been telling our clients, kind of better to be lucky than good, is that from a geographical standpoint as it relates to Highway 80, this falls between the two improvements that are happening on 80 at Old Olive Branch and Olive Branch. And the way we are, we're directly in the middle. So from an access standpoint, we've had coordination with GDOT on this, our access fits in well to coincide with the property across the street to potentially have a full access when the widening occurs. So I did want to point that out from a traffic standpoint, you know, it only necessitates one entrance, but the beauty of that is, is that you've got the ability to have full access when we do get a widened 80. Again, you know, it's not set in stone yet, but we do have a letter of intent from GDOT on it. And again, this is on concept plan submitted for rezoning, so things may change just a little bit having to slide it, but, you know, like I said, it's geographically centered between those two roads. Other than that, I believe that it meets all the same criteria for zoning map amendments and the comprehensive plan amendment as the other stubs tract. And I can answer any questions you have on it.
Thank you. Okay. Another chance from anyone here tonight to speak for or against these items? No? Okay. With that, any last questions for staff or applicant? All good? Okay. May we have a motion, please, to close this public hearing?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. We're now in regular meeting. So just like one and two, we will vote on three and four together, taking two motions. So for the first motion, can we have a motion, please, for this comprehensive plan amendment for item number three, the project 202, 20748?
Make a motion to approve item three?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion so passes and moves up to commissioners in July. May we have a motion, please, for the rezoning for the same project?
Make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion so passes. All right. Moving on. May we have a motion, please, to reopen the public hearing?
Make a motion, we open the public hearing for item five.
For item five.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in public hearing for item five on the agenda.
So this is a rezoning for a property located at 840 Dunham Marsh Trail. This property currently has a single-family residential home on it and is about 10 acres. They're requesting to rezone from A5 to RR. requesting to rezone from A5 to RR 2.5 in order to subdivide an additional lot for, to build a home for a family member. And you can see the surrounding zoning there. This is required because due to the lot width of the lot, they will have to subdivide using either a flag lot or an access easement, and that access portion would not count toward the lot size. So they're not able to subdivide with two five-acre lots, as would be required under the A5 zoning. The area is in a low-density suburban character area, so the RR 2.5 is consistent with this character. The immediately adjacent properties are that A5 zoning, and then other nearby properties are also zone PD, RR 2.5, and R15. So staff does find this proposed rezoning to be compatible with those areas. It should have minimal impact on any public services, and there are potential wetlands on the rear of the property that will limit any further development. This is their proposed sort of general layout for the property. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, and I can answer any questions you have.
Questions for Sarah? No, thank you. Is the applicant here and would you like to speak? Mr. Walters?
Hi.
If you'll just come to the microphone, welcome. Good evening, and just state your name and your address, please.
Do what?
Name and address, just for the record, thank you.
John Walters, 840 Dunham Marsh Trail.
Yes, sir.
I've been in Bryan County 45 years, and I just, I don't want to make nobody mad. But the zoning has changed, you know, so many times. And originally, when we moved there, you know, we had it supposedly rezoned 2.5, but the stipulations now, which we understand the zoning has changed, and the back five acres is not 2.5, is 5. And all we want to do is build another home on the backside for our grown kids, for their kids. And as far as I know, I don't have no neighbors here to complain, so that, that's all it amounts to.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Excuse me. Do we have anyone to speak for, excuse me, or against this project? See, all the neighbors are?
We received one comment against email that's included in your packet.
We did, okay. Did not. I did not see that.
Do you have a?
Was it, was the one from the Riverkeeper? No, that was for the previous.
It's Exhibit D1, so it's the last page of this item.
Oh, okay. Can we, no, can we pull that up? Did anyone read that? I don't print the packet out anymore. I only print out certain sheets.
You got it there?
Do you have it in print, just so we can look, take three minutes to look at it? I apologize. Okay, I'll pass it this way. Did you find it, Michelle? Okay. They found it online. Okay. The guys at the end found it.
Let's get back to the map.
The zoning map or the location map?
Uh, well, either one. Just want to look at the lot sizes. Yeah.
Do we have a license to email?
Absolutely.
Sure. Absolutely. We'll pass that back down. They are reading it online, yes, thank you. Okay, with that, since everyone has had a chance to read that email, we apologize. Sometimes in a 400 packet email, I do apologize. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. We've all read it. Everyone's taken consideration of that opposition from the neighbor of the Walters. If there's no one else in the crowd tonight that would like to speak for or against this item?
Can we offer the applicant a chance to vote anything that's in there?
Sure, yeah, we'll let them take a minute more to finish reading and let them.
What's with the white triangle of no man's land?
That's the city.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, that white triangle?
Yeah. Gray is the city.
That could be no man's land in between county and city. Mr. and Ms. Walters, is there any comment that you would like to make about the email? Since that's the first time that you guys have read that, if you would, if you want to, just come back up to the microphone.
I don't know if they understand what we're going to do, but want to do. But that's going back to the double R 2.5. When I bought the property, it was supposed to have been rezoned the front five acres at 2.5 acres. So, and actually, we bought five acres behind this because I didn't want nobody building right, right in my back door. But that five acres had to be combined with my 10 acre, five acres, made it 10 acres. So, and it doesn't suit their purpose if I was to pursue the two and a half for the front five, which I'd have enough room to build another house up there. And I could build a house and put it right there on the front, front steps instead of putting it way in the back, you know. So I don't know how many acres they got, but there's, it varies from like a little over three acres to 12 acres on that road. And like I said, I've been living right there 30 years and before anybody got out there. But, you know.
Thank you, thank you.
Y'all, y'all have any questions?
I have none.
Need to answer them in the state.
Well, it looks like the lot, the two lots adjoining you to the north, do you know how big those are? Those don't look like they would be certainly not five acres.
No, neither one of them are right there. So.
How would you access that back, back portion?
They'll provide either a flag or a easement.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Walters? Thank you. And if you'll just pass that to Ms. Don there, thank you. All right, guys. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, with that, may we please close this public, have a motion to close this public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. May we have a motion on item number five on the agenda, the rezoning project for 202-302-49?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? So motion so passes. That will go up to the county commissioners for final approval in July. Okay, thank you. May we have a motion, please, to open public hearing for item number six on the agenda?
Should I make a motion to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in public hearing.
So this is a rezoning application for a property located off of 144. It's technically three lots, which are proposed to be combined, total approximately 7.7 acres. They're currently zoned R15, and they're requesting RR 2.5 in order to be able to keep horses on the property as well as build their home on the property. And you can see the surrounding zoning there is R15, and there are some properties across the street that are also zoned RR1 and A5. So it is in keeping with the zoning of the area and will remain a residential use. The proposed rezoning should have minimal impact on any public facilities and will, again, remain primarily residential, so should be in keeping with those surrounding lots. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that the lots are combined. An applicant has already submitted their plat to have that combination done. Any questions?
None. Questions? No, thank you, Sarah. All right, is the applicant here? And if so, would you like to speak, Holly Young?
Hello, everyone. I'm Holly Young, 412 Purple Finch Drive in Poole, Georgia, here to answer any questions. I don't want to be repetitive. I think she's done a great job explaining what these fine folks want to do, and I think they would make extremely good residents for you guys in Bryan County, very good family. They planned to house two horses there.
Any questions for Michelle? No? Thank you for being here. All right. Is there anyone tonight that has anything to say about this rezoning project for or against? No? Okay. Then may we please have a motion to close this public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back in regular meeting. Do we have a motion, please, for this rezoning project 202-303-43?
Make a motion to approve the rezoning project. With staff recommendations.
Approval with staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion so passes. Same thing, that will move up to the July meeting for county commissioners for final approval. Thank you. All right. Go ahead. Do we have a motion, please, to open public?
It's not, it's not a public hearing.
Never mind, thank you. I knew, I stopped myself, thank you. And this will be via Zoom, correct?
Yes, so we have the applicant, he's on mute right now on Zoom, but we'll unmute him afterwards. And if you have any questions for him, or if he wants to add anything he can, you can go ahead and mute him, yeah.
I have a question before we get started. What is our role in this item?
So for this item, the public hearing will be with the Board of Commissioners on July 11th, but we wanted to present it to you all, as always, to give the public an opportunity just to hear it twice, even though it's not a public hearing. And then have you all just vote, even though it's not a public hearing, just to provide some guidance for the Board of Commissioners moving forward with this item.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is going to be a request to relocate an abandoned cemetery for a property. It's parcel 034014. Once I pull it back up, I'll show you the map. But it is located on, near the intersection of US 80 and 280, and it's being requested to relocate it in order to provide some space for future development and possibly future infrastructure, as lines may need to be run through there. And there's the map there, thank you. So the applicant is Mike Reynolds, who is online with Brockington Associates on behalf of the property owner. The cemetery is estimated to date from the late 19th to the early 20th century, and they are guessing there are probably about two to three unmarked graves in the area, and it's about .39 acres, the area in question. And so, again, they're wanting to relocate because of possible future development, and abandoned cemeteries are governed by our State Abandoned Cemetery Act. And that does include some specific standards for review that are gone through in detail in the memo in your package. The applicant did provide an in-depth geological and title search, including reaching out to possible descendants as required under the law. And staff also did post a sign on the property just to provide some additional notification for the public. The disinternment, should it be approved, would be supervised by professionals, including the applicant, and the remains would be reburied in a perpetual care cemetery in Pembroke and marked accordingly. This would also provide an opportunity to better document the cemetery and the graves as required by law. So staff is recommending approval of the relocation with one additional condition, that a marker to be approved by staff is provided on the original site just to document that location. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
So we do know who they are?
Excuse me?
So we do know who they are?
They don't know for sure. They're not marked. Just a marker about, it's Blitch Cemetery is what it's called. And so, just to, to mark where the location of the cemetery was and to reference where those graves are, will be located.
So all the people in our packet that I read that he reached out to, those were descendants?
Possible descendants.
A possible descendant, just of property owners from past deeds?
Yes, I believe so, and some genealogical research they did as well.
Okay, that's very interesting. So.
And those people said, I don't know what you're talking about? I'm sorry to interrupt.
My understanding is either hasn't heard from them, or they said that they didn't have any knowledge of being related to.
It went back to, what, 1918?
Quite, quite far back, yeah.
Okay.
Did you already?
Mike, do you have anything additional to add?
I know we didn't find anybody who had any knowledge of, who's buried there. It could possibly have been tenants for the Blitch family. That was, that was the guess of a few of the senior Blitch family members. But everybody in the Blitch family seems to be accounted for in, in other cemeteries and descendants also bear份 that.
Does anyone have additional questions?
I have a question. I don't know if this is appropriate to ask, but while we have the archaeologist/historian, how often do we get that? If property is developed, we assume there are three unmarked graves. If the property is developed and they find more remains, same thing goes, they just get moved to the site, construction halts, how does that process work?
Yes, I mean, if any, any additional finds would still be unknown. I mean, we're going to carefully scrape the entire cemetery area, the fenced area, even though we did, we did archaeological soil probing and identified the three graves, there's always a possibility once you start scraping soil back that there could be, you know, other graves. But if they're, if they're found, they would be, they would be moved to the perpetual care.
And all of that cost for the burial of the remains at perpetual care is all by the owner of the applicant, correct? The property owner? Not the county?
Right, right. And we gave them, you know, a cost per grave for additional finds if we do find any.
How big is the cemetery? For graves, is it? It's .3, okay.
Yeah.
If in the event you find somebody, you're scraping, you find that there's actually burial records with them, they were buried with identification, something along the lines, would any development halt as you have to notify the next of kin of that particular person, or at least genealogically, anybody down the line? Or is it, or does it fall in line with the whole permit of consecrating the grave, where they're going to be simply moved? I mean, when it comes to consecration, I mean, you know, you might have to have, is that, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay. In the event that another grave is found, but, I mean, we know these are unmarked, and I know you had done the best you can to assume that we can, you know, you can identify the remains in a proper way. If you do find one that's possibly identifiable, I mean, we're talking left field, but I mean, nonetheless, is there, is there a procedure in place to, you know, halt construction or development for that matter, notify, or potentially notify anybody for this particular gravesite?
Well, I mean, they could be held in, in the funeral home rather than be reinterred until we could, you know, figure out a plan. But the permit would be for removal of any of the graves, the permit application would be for, for the removal of any graves within that cemetery.
Yeah, that was my question, is does the permit encapsulate all graves that were there, which specifically is in plan? Okay, thank you, that's all I need to go.
Yeah, it includes, it includes additional finds.
Any other questions? No. Thank you for being with us tonight. Any additional comments? Mike is his name. Mike, any addition?
We do have, we do have somebody, one of the clients too, do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions for the client? This, we're speaking to the archaeologist/historian now, any questions for the client? This, we're speaking to the archaeologist/historian now, any questions for the client? No? Okay. Thank you, thank you for being here. So since this is not a public hearing, we will not ask for anyone to speak that, if anyone is in the audience, to speak for or against, that would need to happen at the July county commissioners meeting. So with that, just, we're going to take a motion, and this is just a recommendation moving up to the county commissioners. So do we have a motion for this item number six, the cemetery relocation project?
Make a motion to proceed? Would that be correct? Motion to proceed?
Make a motion to recommend.
Recommend relocation?
Approval of the relocation.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have two opposed, okay. But one, two, three, and did you oppose or approved? Approved? I'm sorry, okay, so motion so passes. Okay, so that will move up to the county commissioners in July. And with that, I believe we are in adjournment unless we have anything else from the staff. No other business, okay? With that, may I please have? Thank you. May we please have a motion for adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So adjourned.